I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Move on to the consent agenda and consider a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And we'll go ahead and move on to opportunity for public comment for items not on the agenda. I'm going to limit each speaker to no more than five minutes. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the commission? All right. I don't see anybody. So then we will go ahead and move on to the commissioner report. If there are any commissioners that would like to make an informational report.
Madam Chair, I go one more thing.
All right. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Commissioners, this is kind of in a fluid situation, but next board meeting, I hope to be able to have the representative from NACO, a gentleman by the name of Brian Namy, who works with NACO as their lobbyist, and he'll be able to come on and tell us exactly what we're able to utilize these COVID funds for. As you know, we got $11 million that are coming because of the size of our population, and there's a lot of misunderstanding as to how that money can be spent. So the Treasury Department is supposed to have those rules published, and I thought it would be an opportunity for us and the whole state, for that matter, to find out what we can spend those dollars on. So that would be next Tuesday. So just an FYI.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? All right. If not, we'll go ahead and move into our second reading and public hearing. Toby, were you going to handle that?
Yeah. This is the second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as tract 1P Burgers Edition Northwest Quarter, Section 34 Township 100 North, R49 West from the A1 Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission recommends approval 5-0 with one abstention.
Thank you.
Good morning. The applicant owner for this property is David Nagelhout. This property is located just to the northwest of Lake Elvin. Subject parcel is 5.23 acres in size. The purpose for this application is Mr. Nagelhout owns a property directly to the east. He is proposing to parcel off a portion of this property, essentially the tree line, and add it to his property to the east. The remainder would then be utilized for a single-family dwelling. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you. Any commissioners have any questions for staff? If not, is the applicant here?
I don't see him.
Okay. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the application? All right. I don't see anybody. Anybody wishing to speak against the application? If not, I'd consider a motion? Thank you. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to item two on our agenda. It's a second reading and public hearing.
It's the second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning the property legally described as north 733 feet, south 1,499.69 feet, west 730 feet, except part of H2 Northwest Quarter, Section 33 Township 100 North, R51 West from the A1 Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission recommends approval 5-0 with one abstention.
Thank you.
The applicant owner for this is Richard Peters. This property is approximately five miles to the west of the city of T. Subject property is approximately 11.99 acres in size. Mr. Peters did submit a concept plan with the application. He is proposing 12, to subdivide the property, a portion of this property, and then the full property to the south, which has already been rezoned to rural residential. He's proposing a 12-lot rural residential subdivision. The subdivision plan will, if this is approved, the subdivision plan would go through the planning commission, and then you'll see that as well, probably in the next couple of months. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for staff? If not, is the applicant here?
We're 0-for-2. I don't see him.
Okay. Anybody here to speak in favor of the application? All right. Nobody is here to speak in favor. Anybody against? All right. With that, since there's nobody appearing on any count, I'd go ahead and consider a motion?
I also moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you.
Is the motion to approve?
Correct.
That's my second.
Thank you. Any further discussion by the board? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We'll go ahead and move on to the second reading and public hearing. That is item three on our agenda.
So the second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning a portion, approximately 20 acres, proposed tract 1 of the property legally described as north half, northeast quarter, except H1, Section 18 Township 98 North, R50 West from the I1 Light Industrial District to the I2 General Industrial District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission recommends approval 3, 2, 2, with one abstention.
Thank you.
The applicant owner for this is Paul Garbers. The location of this property is just to the north of the Sioux Falls Regional Livestock. The parcel size, this parcel is proposed to be subdivided into 20 acres, which would essentially be right here. And that would be shown here. So again, this would be proposed to be subdivided and then sold to a second party. The second party, for the purpose, essentially, the initial purpose when we presented the planning commission was to be subdivided and then sold to a second party. Since that time, submitted into the public record just last week was some information from that second party's attorney, and identified that East Dakota Beef Processing would be the purchaser of the property. East Dakota Beef Processing also submitted, this is going to take a while to load, but... Also submitted a concept plan, which should be as shown here. So again, this would be the purpose of it. There is neighborhood opposition to this application. The city of Worthing just yesterday submitted a resolution that was passed by the Worthing City Commission that is in opposition to this application. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time.
Well, thank you. Toby, what was staff's recommendation?
Staff recommendation was approval.
Thank you.
Toby, would you put the original picture up, the one you showed right at the beginning? Okay. Thank you.
So a little bit of background on this as well is that this property and the property to the south was rezoned in 2006. In 2006, the Lincoln County zoning ordinance only had one industrial district, a singular industrial district. In 2009, when the county revised the zoning ordinance, they created an I1 and I2 zoning district. At that time, staff at the time placed all existing I properties into light industrial. So currently, as was stated in the letter from the sub-party's attorney, there's three properties that are zoned I2 in Lincoln County currently, but there are a number of uses in Lincoln County that operate as I2, which are non-conforming. I guess, any other questions you have for staff at this time? I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody else have any questions? All right. Is the applicant present? Yeah. Sorry, I'd have you come up to the podium. Please state your name and address, and just kind of explain what you're envisioning.
Okay. Paul Garbers. I live at 1016 Angelene in Canton. Also got that business out at the interstate of I-29 and Highway 18. Like Toby said, the 20 acres up in the northeast corner is what I'm proposing to sell to them. It's been on the highlights for quite some time now already. They're here to tell you what they want to do with it, but that's what my proposal is, to sell them the 20-plus acres.
All right.
I think it's 20.01.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Garber?
Is this currently Paul in cropland, CRP, or what is it in?
It's in CRP, which the whole 70 acres that's in the blue is up for renewal or whatever.
How long has it been in CRP? I'm just curious.
10 and a half years. Well, it will be October 1st.
Does anybody have any other questions?
It's actually, I mean, just Toby said it was Paul Garbers. It's actually my company, CBC Land. The name is on that title.
Understood. If not, I'm just going to ask if there's anybody else here that's wanting to speak in favor of this application for rezon. Thank you, Mr. Garber. Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you just state your name and address?
My name is David Coburn. I live in Garrettson, South Dakota, and farm just south of Garrettson.
I'm sorry, sir. Can you speak up? State your name again, please.
My name is David Coburn. I live on a farm just south of Garrettson. I'm the COO of East Dakota Beef Processing Center. And with me today is some of our staff from Boyce Law Office. We have Paul Cheddar and Xander Savage. We have our engineer from DGA Engineering, Dan DeHaan. Dr. DeHaan could not be here because of business-related activities that he has, but he is the gentleman that put this entire project together, and I'll explain it briefly. Also, who could not be here is Adam Mullced from the governor's office, and he instructed me to ask you that he's going to reach out to each and every one of you commissioners and discuss what the state thinks about this program and project. Okay, the site, in our opinion, in our opinion, is perfect. It sits right behind two lagoons. It fits right into where we could be. We'll build a road any way we can to meet DOT, because we have to go in and out of the place. This facility is a $10 million facility that fits right in this little, it's a small processing plant.
Can you, yeah, can you just go into exactly what your initial plan is? I know we're not addressing the conditional use permit today, just as just the reason.
What we'd like to do is buy the property from Paul. We'd like to build a $10 million facility, have 50, 60 employees there, about $2.5 million. And then look at the tax bases that we have here, which would pay over annually almost $500,000 locally, $400,000 state, and $200,000 to the federal government. This is a great catalyst to start other businesses with. But the big thing that it does, it fills the void between a locker, a local locker, which you can't get into, and the Big Four, which is the big mega-producing plants. This is built after New Zealand's concept of having a small, local processing plant in a community to help functionality of the selling of cattle, and also the consumer having access to a meat processing facility.
And then will there be retail sales on the property?
No, not initially. That's down the road, as like I said, as a catalyst. We'd like the community involved in those type of things. We don't want to be the sole owner of everything. We want to have activity in the community on just about everything we do, other than the processing of the facility. This fits like a glove with the regional, because the synergy between the two of us, business-wise, is huge. Same thing with the local cattle producers.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and ask if the board has any questions for Mr. Coburn.
Not at this time.
All right. That's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Can you just state your name and address, please?
Certainly. Paul Cheddar. I reside in Sioux Falls. I practice law at the Boyce Law Firm, and I'm here this morning representing East Dakota Beef. I want to start with highlighting Toby's comments very briefly, because we're sort of here through a series of fortunate or unfortunate events. Toby highlighted that in 2006, there was a single industrial label across industrial zone properties in Lincoln County. Then administratively, in 2009, through the adoption of your zoning ordinance, all of those zoning uses, whether they were conforming or not conforming, were labeled as light industrial. And since 2009, there's only three parcels that have sought a rezon to general industrial. There's an acreage between Harrisburg and Canton that has that zoning category, and then some railroad siding property just north of the Highway 11, Highway 18 interchange, west of town. But for those series of events, this step in the process may not be necessary. But it is, and we want to highlight and focus our conversation today as much as possible on the rezon question. And you've already had comments from Mr. Coburn about the planned use, but I want to focus your attention and the attention of comments that I anticipate are going to come away from what East Dakota Beef's plans are and the conditional use conversation that will be 45 or 60 days from now, and focus instead on the site. As highlighted by the map on the screen, the site's in an amazing location for the planned, for to be zoned industrial, general industrial for Lincoln County. Lincoln County has very minimal acres available that are located at this type of situation, where you've got an overpass that gives you access to the Lenox community. You've also, you're equidistant, a mile north and a mile south from exits, interchanges off of I-29. So the potential for this site to serve as a catalyst for economic growth for the county, whether it's value-added agriculture products that work in synthesis with Sioux Falls Regional Livestock or other general industrial uses, it's a site that is ideal for uses that may not be ideal for industrial parks located in communities, but that can serve the general economic growth prospects of Lincoln County. Under the general industrial category, I2, it's important to highlight that there's very few uses that aren't going to require parties to come back to the county to get greater conditions or requirements placed upon them. The zoning ordinance highlights most of the uses under general industrial, under 804, as being conditional uses, including general manufacturing, distilling, paper manufacturing. All of those things would have to come back for a conditional use permit. So zoning the property as in general industrial is both required only because of some logistical administrative events that took place over the past 15 years, but also does not mean you're letting the genie out of the bottle. This site and the concerns raised by those who reside in the Worthing area can coexist based upon the conditional use process that will take place later this spring and early summer. Importantly, as highlighted in the letter submitted to you last week or to the auditor's office, it's dated April 22nd. It's page 97 of your packet before the meeting, and I appreciate the time that this role takes for all of you, and so I'm not going to assume that you've read it, but I want to highlight a couple of things from that letter. The comprehensive plan adopted by the county highlights objectives and highlights goals of the county in land use regulation and planning. And as highlighted on page 97 and 98 of your packet, rezoning this to general industrial meets those objectives, satisfies those objectives, and enables the county to meet those objectives going forward. Specifically, the county's comprehensive plan identifies that there will be locations in the county, in ag areas, that are appropriately to be zoned as industrial areas, and they include existing industrial areas with some expansion. The existing Sioux Falls Regional Livestock area and the nodal plan development at this exit creates a unique opportunity for Lincoln County to utilize its land use regulations to further accomplish economic growth and development at that interchange. Further, in terms of the design criteria highlighted in the comprehensive plan, as highlighted at page 98 of your submittal, there are appropriate buffers from this site to residential uses and other uses. It's more than half a mile from the nearest residential site to the east, and that residential site, as depicted on the projecting screen, has buffering of trees along the west side of their acreage. The, in terms of absolute proximity, the closest residential use is just across the interstate to the west. That site is buffered by both the interstate itself, by trees on the acreage site, and more importantly, by the interchange and the geography of the interchange that provides sightline and audio buffering from that location. Most importantly, as it relates to the city of Worthing, we've got a greater distance than a mile from the city limits, mile plus from the nearest residence. And despite the opposition by the city of Worthing that you'll hear about this morning and from residents, this lies outside the jurisdiction of the city of Worthing. And so while I don't want to minimize their concerns, and I want to highlight our willingness to have reasonable and productive conversations with them at the conditional use permitting phase, they don't have any greater authority than a resident in north end of Beersford or the south end of Harrisburg or Hudson, as it relates to your decision this morning as to whether or not this site should be rezoned. Madam Chair, I would appreciate the chance to speak to some of the complaints or concerns that I expect to hear later in the meeting, rather than anticipating them now, but I'm happy to speak to them now, as highlighted in my submittal to the commission previously.
Sure. And just for time's sake, and this is not the conditional use hearing, so I'd like to keep it focused solely on complaints related to the rezon itself, if that's possible.
Yep. The one that, the two that I think are germane to that, most germane to that are the road, which is 471st Avenue. Now, there's been, the first complaint was about smell, and then when we had a chance to explain to people that this industrial site isn't going to necessarily generate smell that's noticeable, given the existence of a lagoon half a mile to the south, and the city of Worthing's uncovered city lagoons on the southwest edge of town, then people's complaints about the rezon or planned use, one and the same, in some respects shifted to the road of 471st Avenue. And East Dakota Beef's business will rise and fall on its ease of access. We've already made committals to area residents that will limit all traffic to go south on 471st Avenue, to limit any impact of traffic on the Worthing community. And if that's the road that we're tying ourselves to using, we're going to ensure that it's well-maintained and cared for, so that we can have employees, company leadership, and most importantly, our product come and go from the site. And that's true whether it's East Dakota Beef or any other business that's going to be at this location. The closest paved road is in access to the interstate is south on 471st Avenue, and then accessing Highway 18 to the interstate. So in terms of that road usage and industrial use on the site, there are protections under the law for the township. Remember, the user of this rezoned property, whether it's East Dakota Beef or somebody else, is going to be paying taxes to the township. And the only township road they'll likely be using is 471st Avenue. Furthermore, my client is willing to provide bonds and enter into maintenance agreements with the township for the long term after construction is completed, to ensure that that road is well-maintained and usable for that site.
Paul, I got a question.
Certainly.
Toby, do you have a map that you can put up there where you can zoom out and we can see where the city of Worthing is in comparison or in contrast to the applicant's site? Paul, my question is this, because I think it goes towards one of the issues with regard to the rezon, is... And I want to get, I'm going to ask the same question, too, to the opponents as well. Is there's this issue of Worthing's future growth pattern relative to the site? And I want to give you an opportunity to tell me what your position is or what your argument is with regard to Worthing's future growth. Or, I don't know if they have a comprehensive use plan. I don't know if they have a future use plan. But I do want to ask you, what is your position with regard to Worthing's future growth relative to the site?
Sure. And I assume what you've just highlighted, Toby, is their future growth footprint.
That's their subdivision authority.
Subdivision authority. Thank you. Well, first of all, I don't have any background in city planning, but I do understand the growth in which this part of the state and this part of the county is growing. So I don't want to be dismissive of the likelihood that Worthing does experience some growth. Any growth that takes place west on either side of 280th Street is going to be at least a half a mile, if not more, from the planned site. I think that they are overselling the prospects of growth that direction for the pure purpose of opposing this project, because what they don't want to talk about is the 800-pound gorilla smack dab in the middle of the screen, which are their uncovered municipal sewer lagoons. And I think that's going to be a greater detriment to their city growth than what happens a half a mile or a mile away. They've got industrial zone properties in close proximity to residents on the northeast part of the city. So I think the complaint is being a bit overblown. I also think the complaint doesn't take into account the conditions that can be imposed by the county at the next phase of the process. And I also think it fails to take into account the fact that our same site, I don't think there'd be any opposition if Mr. Garbers requested to have it be zoned agricultural versus industrial. It's used as CRP. If he were to rezon that as agricultural, on our same site, without a conditional use permit, without needing other permitting, he could have up to 499 head of cattle. He could have 27,000 turkeys. He could have 15,000 chickens. So there are uses that are arguably less attractive to the city of Worthing than what it is. is planned, and our planned facility or the use of that as a rezone site, I think, will go hand in hand with what the city of Worthing has planned for growth. In order to have growth, you need to have jobs, in order to have jobs, you need to have employers, and so I think if anything, rezoning that as general industrial is a benefit to the city of Worthing, just as it is a benefit to the county as a whole, given job creation and their desire to build houses on the west side of their community towards If I could just address a couple of last things, Madam Chair. With respect to written submittals and complaints that have been, or arguments that have been raised with relative to the rezone, a couple of others are light pollution. Anybody who builds a facility after this is rezoned, general industrial, will have to satisfy, whether it's conditions imposed by the county or limitations imposed by other agencies, the light is a bit of a red herring. They're also complaining about a spike in in-town traffic. That could be remedied through conditions imposed by the county, as it relates to East Dakota Beef specifically. As I mentioned, all of our traffic is not going to go through town. There are other people that are complaining that the traffic isn't going to go through towns, we won't buy sandwiches in Worthing. This is the moving target that we've experienced over the last forty-five days in dealing with the opponents, we're just looking for something to stick. Wildlife, because there's concerns of wildlife at this location, granted, it's CRP, I don't know what there is for wildlife within a quarter mile or a half a mile of I-29, I think that complaint is a bit misplaced. And finally, as it relates to dust, that is a limitation that can be placed as a condition on the site regardless of who the user is through that process. So as I mentioned at the outset, this is only before you through the administrative hurdles that could have created a unique circumstance in oh-six and oh-nine. This site is perfect as a catalyst for economic development for Lincoln County. I think it fits with what Worthing has planned for growth towards the interstate in terms of providing an employer. I think rezoning this as general industrial satisfies the objectives, satisfies the criteria, satisfies the desires of the comprehensive plan in its proximity to both the interstate and proximity to other industrial-type uses at the Sioux Falls Regional Livestock. With that, I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I would ask, if I could, Madam Chair, to have a brief opportunity at the end to maybe address concerns with the rezone that I haven't spoken to yet.
We'll see where we're at with time and things, but yep, that's not a problem.
Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Go ahead, Mr. Colbert.
I have a list of over a hundred cattle producers that want this. I have contacted Farmers Union, they want it. I've contacted local co-ops in the area, they want it. I've contacted local businesses in the area, they want it. We're not going to compete with any locker here because they're all, they are already at full capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? If you have a representative for a group of you, for time's sake, that would be appreciated, but otherwise, we'll go ahead and take anyone who wants to approach.
Madam Chair, Mike Nadolsky, live in Lincoln Township here on behalf of City Worthing. I have a number of folks here from the city of Worthing that want to speak, and I'd like to stay in the back a little bit and bring up the rear, if you don't mind.
You can approach it any way you want, but I am, I'm not, I mean, usually these public hearings are limited to about a half hour, but I'll give fair time to the opposition, for sure.
Good enough, thank you.
All right, don't everybody jump at once. Thank you. Can you just come on up and state your name and address?
Yeah, my name is Dan Geik, and I live at two-eight-zero-nine-eight-four-hundred-and-seventieth Avenue, Worthing, South Dakota. I want to go on record as a concerned resident who's opposed to this rezoning of this parcel of land. I've lived in this community for nineteen years, I have been a resident of the Lynn Township for that duration. I have been in the construction industry my entire adult life. I have owned a construction company and have been a licensed general contractor for twenty-five years in the Sioux Empire, and I have dealt with road access and infrastructure issues. This parcel of land has no access other than township roads. These township roads were never intended for commercial use and were never built for heavy traffic. We in Lynn Township have dealt with flooded roads, washed-out intersections, closed sections of roads, and impassable conditions most springs and multiple times throughout the year. When we question why can't remedy problem areas be taken care of, the response is always the same, that it is a budget issue. This section of road that would be used to access Eastern Dakota Beef has many problem areas, and is underwater during wet years and heavy rain occurrences. Its road width is narrow, making it impossible for large vehicles to pass without one vehicle pulling off the shoulder. It has a road base that is not adequate for heavy traffic and oversized commercial vehicles. During the planning and zoning meeting, we were told that Eastern Dakota Beef would maintain the road for two years. When the members of the Lynn Township questioned the Township Board about this agreement, no agreement was produced, no specifications were given. When questioned if Eastern Beef would be financially responsible to rebuild the road, they did not know. When asked if they had performed an engineered load study on the road, once again, they had not. Since that meeting, you should have all received an email from Lynn Township Board recanting their approval and stating they spoke too soon. Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan clearly states industrial zoning should be on adequate hard surface access. I have spoken with the developers to get a generalized cost of what it would take to bring one section of this road up to those standards. Conservatively, it would be two hundred dollars a foot, considering the distance that would cost over a million dollars. That is a million dollars the Township doesn't have. According to Dave Colbert of Eastern Dakota Beef, when questioned at the Canton informational meeting, why East Dakota abandoned the previous location of Lennox, he said they would have been required to provide a three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar access road, and that was unreasonable. So my question is this, how are they going to pay for this access and its maintenance? Toby from Lincoln County Planning addressed the Worthing City Commission, and informed us that access to East Dakota Beef would have to be from Highway eighteen, and no other access point should be used. During the Canton informational meeting, questions were brought up, what would happen when the road flooded, which it does multiple times a year? Would Eastern Beef shut down until the road was passable again? Once again, David Colbert said, no, we would have to use alternative routes. Once again, at the expense of the Township and its residents, and once again, recanting on what they said they would do. This facility at its proposed size and employee count would put the strain of hundreds of miles of traffic every day on a road built for rural use, and the consequences to the community and its residents would be devastating. I strongly advise you to listen to the over three hundred and eighty community members who have already signed petitions against this, and businesses that have wrote your letters, and vote no on the rezoning.
Thank you. Good morning, sir. Will you just state your name and address, please?
I'm Brian Abis, I live at four-six-nine-six-five-two-hundred-and-eighty-first Street, Worthing. I grew up here and have farmed here for over forty years, and I'd like to address first the issue of the fact that this is a high-water table area. There are artesian flowing wells to the east and west, south of the proposed site, continuing south for two to three miles. The proposed site has a large slough along its southern border, with a large drainage ditch coming from the north along its west edge. So any of the runoff from the site either ends up in the slough, field drainage, or in the road ditch. So we have to protect our groundwater from contamination. And then again, I'm running into the fact that he's already talked about the gravel road, they're made for, they're made for rural traffic, blah, blah, blah. And at times, like in heavy rains and whatever, the road's been known to go underwater, making it spongy and untravelable, and this not making it sufficient for general industrial traffic or the traffic that will be created by the packing plant. And again, they haven't brought forward any studies or any plan on this, just their talk about a contract that will be for two years to maintain the road, which doesn't address the issue of building the road to the specs with a base for the road or a hard surface, which would be necessary for the amount of traffic that's going to be created by them. Being a farmer, I'm also personally concerned about the disruption of ag traffic. Will this divert more ag traffic to the roads and bridges that already have heavy traffic, like Highway eighteen and Highway forty-four, causing a lot of safety concerns for the drivers? Traveling with large equipment like tractors, combines, tillage units is stressful enough without adding another problem to it. And again, the traffic, the extra traffic that will undoubtedly go east on two-eighty-first Street and north on four-seventy-first Avenue, and then what about the safety issue of the traffic that will go west over two-hundred-and-eighty-first Street, over the bridge on two-hundred-and-eighty-first Street? These are only a few of my concerns, which kind of overlap with the conditional use discussion and stuff, but I do not think this is an area that should be rezoned to general industry, and I also do not think that this proposed packing plant is a good idea for this location or our community. I would like to thank all of you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Brian, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
You made mention of artesian flowing wells. Where does that come from? Was there environmental study, or, I know you've lived there your whole life, I understand that.
Well, it's basically that I've lived here all my life, and I know, I know these areas and the farm places within this area, not on the site, but to the south and west of the site, the farm places have, there's two different flowing wells that are to the east along eighteen and north of eighteen, and across the interstate behind where the, where the State Department, Highway Department is, the farm place that used to be there had a flowing well, artesian flowing well. And I'm just trying to emphasize the fact that this is a high-water table area, you know, if you have artesian flowing wells. And if you just look at the area that they dug out for the, for the roadwork there, right along the interstate off of the Canton exit, when we went into a drought here, the water table stayed high in that slough area the whole time, you know? So we are dealing with a high-water, high-water area, and my concern there would be the contamination or whatever of possibilities, you know? So, and also that high-water table affecting the base for the road, and whether or not, you know, that there's going to be a plan to rebuild that road and make it a serviceable road for this operation or any operation that might contribute to the traffic that this would.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead and take the next commenter, if there is one. Good morning, just state your name and address, please.
Nick Abis, four-six-nine-zero-five-two-hundred-and-eighty-first Street in Worthing, and I'm speaking today with these concerns and just asking that we vote against this to take a better look at a place to rezone, because like it was discussed, we're looking a mile up a road, so as the taxpayers, I think it would be good to have a plan instead of, we're going to put this up and eventually look at taking taxpayer money to build the roads up in this area. And if the company had walked away from Lennox for three hundred and eighty thousand, it's kind of clear that it's going to be a taxpayer issue to eventually improve this road. And I've got numbers here and traffic numbers that this plant alone would have twenty-five thousand vehicles annually traveling the road, and I don't think that's enough to justify paving the road, but obviously, the road can't stay in its current condition. And then the industrial park on the edge of Canton was suggested to this company as an alternative on a hard-surface road with proper infrastructure, and the company stated with their three hundred thousand gallon a week potential output, they weren't sure if Canton could handle that. So we had asked them about putting a lagoon there, and the company's statement was, putting the large lagoons so close to the edge of a city was not a good and considerable idea. With this, there seems to be little consideration given to the close neighboring community, the road conditions, and the emergency facilities of the area. I know for a long time now, when you go through Worthing, they have signs up and they're asking for volunteer firefighters, and as far as I'm understanding, they're very short-staffed in the volunteer firefighters, so if there's an emergency out here and the fire department doesn't have proper personnel, it's setting up problems for them responding. And the sense here is, we're just, the packing plant found this area, and we're just looking to spot zone just one random area instead of taking a bigger approach to the whole county looking at what's best, hard-surface roads. And so for all my stated concerns on this rezone, I'm strongly opposed to it, and I just ask you to vote today against it so we can take a better look at stuff. I know, like they stated, with everyone commenting, all the people here, out in the hallways, letters received, petitions received, Worthing's opposition is, there's a lot of opposition to this location, and it's just a problem with the facility, the location, the road, just so close to the city. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Reese Allman, I'm an attorney with the Davenport Evans Law Firm up in Sioux Falls, here speaking on behalf of Missy Geiken, who's a Lynn Township resident at twenty-eight oh-nine-eight-four-seventieth Avenue, Worthing, South Dakota. Unfortunately, she can't be here this morning, so I'm speaking in her place. A little bit about my background, I do zoning work all across the state. I've been to countless zoning hearings just like this one here, and anytime we're talking about zoning, I think the big word is compatibility. When we're looking at compatibility, we're looking at the surrounding areas. Here, you've received an outpouring of opposition from folks who live in the surrounding area. You've heard opposition from the nearest municipality, the town of Worthing, just barely over a mile away from this facility. So while you don't need to absolutely heed the advice of the folks who are outpouring opposition, I think that when you have over, you know, nearly four hundred people saying that this just isn't compatible, this site doesn't work, when you have the closest municipality saying, this doesn't work, this isn't compatible with what we're trying to do here, I think that speaks volumes about whether or not this site is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. But if you do want to actually attach it to your guys' comprehensive plan, which I know is part of this process, you guys are looking at your comprehensive plan, that gives you guidance on whether or not we should rezone this parcel from I-one to I-two, I spent some time looking through your comprehensive plan, and it is littered with references to working with, coordinating, and cooperating with municipalities when zoning decisions are made about property that is very close to municipalities. The reason is, is because down the road, a lot of the costs associated with this type of facility is going to get passed on to the municipality. And while this isn't a joint zoning division like we have up in Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County, where each side actually have to agree on a decision like this, the comprehensive plan does encourage you guys to all consider what Worthing, in this example, wants in this situation. So again, I strongly encourage you to listen to Worthing, hear what the city is saying, and hear that they're opposed to this project. You've heard from some of the folks about the concerns they have here, the lack of hard-surface roads, environmental concerns, emergency services concerns, the water table issues. These are all reasons why a general industrial zoning in this specific location is not compatible with the surrounding area and the surrounding neighborhood. There are, there are better sites for this facility in this county. I think last night, you received several letters from opponents, you've heard from some today, I encourage you all to listen to them, hear them, they have a good sense of what is compatible with the surround- They, they have a good sense of what is compatible with, with the surrounding area. So with that, I'd respectfully ask that you guys vote no and oppose rezoning this from I-1 to I-2.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in opposition?
I don't want to run out of time. Mike Nadolsky, I'm still from Lincoln Township. I'm here on behalf of the City of Worthing. Uh, I want to, I'm not going to replow a bunch of ground. I have a couple, three comments to make. Number one, I agree. I don't think that this is a jurisdictional issue. I think it's a partnership issue with the City of Worthing, which is also a political subdivision located in, uh, Lincoln County. And compatibility often is, like beauty, it's a, in the eye of the beholder. And you guys have been elected to determine what's in the best interests of Lincoln County in terms of what Lincoln County zoning is going to look like. I think the fact that, uh, looking at this parcel and moving it from one district into another district without consulting with Worthing, uh, I think defeats some of your policy statements when it comes to what your comprehensive plan says your policies are. I think if you look at the comprehensive plan and drill down, uh, on that, uh, you have said that you think the majority of commercial and industrial development should occur within the municipalities. You have said that reasonable, uh, industrial and commercial development can occur in what you've categorized as rural, commercial, industrial areas. And I'm going to get to that. We did that with the Commerce Plan Development District. Uh, and if you look at that, that has two sub-areas. Uh, that has the sub-area, A is the livestock barn and sub-area B is essentially light industrial with commercial. And today we're here seeking to move this entire parcel into the, uh, I-2 general, which is essentially heavy industrial. So not only do you have all the heavy industrial uses listed, you're making available any other similar use, use, apologize, that's not listed in the, uh, I-2 district. And that's just simply too much for collectively the City of Worthing. Now, they don't certainly oversell what they think the future lies in store for their community. And if you saw the letter, they think that the area directly north of this is going to be mixed-use, commercial and residential. That's what they think. And they don't think that turning this entire parcel into a heavy industrial area is compatible with that. And certainly you guys are charged with determining what is compatible and what isn't. But if you look at Commerce Plan Development and then you draw a line up to Worthing, it really isn't. It's a little bit of the Sesame Street game, right? One of these things doesn't belong here. So you guys have to decide what that is. So I want to drill down a little bit more on this, uh, commercial industrial area. If you look at your comp plan, one of your policy statements is you're going to utilize the Plan Development District. And if you think it's in the best interests of Lincoln County to have some facility like this, uh, and you're not inclined, uh, or you are inclined to move this into a different district, I'd submit and suggest your comprehensive plan suggests you should utilize the Plan Development District, like you did for Commerce Plan Development District. If indeed this is going to fit like a glove, you have the zoning tool where you can make it fit like a glove and make sure that there's not other heavy industrial uses if this use were ever to go away. So, uh, in the end, Worthing is standing here before you, asking you to vote no on this legislative decision. And if you are inclined to do so, please utilize the Plan Development District, remand it back to the Planning Commission and craft a Plan Development District that you think suits, uh, the area in the best interest of Lincoln County. Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question for the proponents. It's appropriate.
Sure.
I don't know if that, if you would signal that the opponents are done.
Um, yep, I'm just wondering, I'll take a couple more opponents at this point.
I, I hear the double, double out there. Your, your voice is double out there. And I am Don Abbess at 280704, 72nd Avenue, Worthing, South Dakota. Worthing does not want this processing plant to be built here so close to the town. We have sold two acreages with the new housing in the past year, and there are more offerings that they have, we have known, known about. The property values of those living in the area and those wanting to build homes will get down, go down and affect the quality of life of the community. We have talked to many neighbors, we're all opposed to the project. We're also concerned about the road use, which is necessary for those of us who are farming.
Sure. And we're not, we've, we've heard the road issue, so I don't want to go back over that again. If you have anything that hasn't already been said, go ahead with that.
There is a safety issue involved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any, anybody else that would like to address the board in opposition to this request?
Hello, I'm Amy Dyke. I live at 47038 281st Street. And my home is on this map. It's kitty corner. And this is where I raised my family. And I am opposed to this going here.
Hello, I am Danielle DeBerg. I live at 204 Park Street in Worthing. So if you see the very small corner basically pointing at the current Worthing lagoons, that's my house. Okay? Couple of things I do want to address. The proponents did say that it's more than a mile from Worthing. As the crow flies, my house is 1.0003 miles to the proposed site. They also mentioned the sewer lagoons are detrimental to growth. I will let you know that the houses down by the Worthing lagoons are some of the nicer houses there. So them saying that is also not going to work in their favor if they're saying that it's going to be detrimental to the growth of Worthing to the west. That is not actually a thing that is where the newer growth of Worthing currently is at. I do also want to bring up some concerns with rezoning this to a heavier industrial site in regards to what it might do to population influxes for our city and our school district. Basically, our school district is not ready to handle this higher influx, the fast influx of this type of rezoning. We are already having problems keeping up with some title and special education needs and a higher influx due to this type of rezoning would likely increase those needs as well. As a parent with a special needs child, my concern is that the heavier rezoning will cause a population influx and one that our schools are not ready to handle at this time at least. Thank you. Danielle DeBerg.
All right. Take one more person in opposition this morning.
Michelle Bowler, 201 North Chris Street, Worthing. I just simply want to state that I'm opposed to this. Worthing is my home. And although we may not have the authority where it is on the map, um, that's my home and I have a right to speak. So I speak in opposition.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call the proponents back up if somebody wants to come up and speak for the group. And I don't know, maybe Commissioner, do you have a more pointed question for somebody else that's here? But go ahead.
I do, and I was going to call Paul up. Paul, uh, you heard what Mr. Nadolsky said. City of Worthing, if I'm hearing it correctly, and Mike can reframe it if he needs to, is suggesting that perhaps it's not the building of, on the site that is the issue for the City of Worthing, but it's the issue of whether, what kind of zoning should be used in particular, whether we should use a tool that we have called a Plan Development District. What is your response to that?
I think that's another one of the throw everything at the wall and see what sticks to not have this pass. I think it's a delay tactic. If I would have, if I would have Mr. Nadolsky's, uh, if he could speak with authority of the city, that they will waive all the other complaints that they've raised about it if we go down that path, um, that would be one thing. But with respect to the Plan Development District, it's appropriate in areas where you're looking at a, a larger footprint. Uh, the Sioux Falls Regional Livestock Site is probably, oh, perhaps 70 acres in size, where there's multiple uses beyond just the initial, initially built Sioux Falls Regional Livestock. Here, uh, there's no subdividing our site. There's no, uh, plans to do, have a sale to another party for part of the site. It's 20 acres for a single use, um, that has abutting and neighboring parcels that are conducive and complimentary to that singular use. And so the development park concept, I think, is more appropriate on a, either larger site or where there's multiple uses planned. And on that particular site, the categories of zoning uses change as you get closer to the Highway 18 frontage. They envision banking or other financial institutions or other more customer-facing uses out there on the highway, which I think is, uh, closely matches the desires of the, the comprehensive plan. Our site and our plan, um, doesn't fall into that, it's sort of apples to oranges in my, in my mind. And I don't think that it would be appropriate at a site of this size with a single, single use.
Yeah, let me interject. Aside from these issues of throwing everything at the wall, delay tactics, I want to put that stuff to the side.
Sure.
Mechanically speaking, procedurally, could you do this through a Plan Development District? Or would that simply be incompatible with, uh, the ability of these folks to put this business up?
It would be incompatible from a timeline perspective first, uh, in terms of, uh, what this would mean for the 2021 construction season, uh, from, as a practical reality. Secondly, uh, I don't, he's, the gentleman's not here, um, but months ago, we reached out to Lincoln County, talked to Toby. Toby, here's what we've got planned. What information can you give us to help us be a good neighbor for Lincoln County? That same day, I called the then existing, I don't know if he's in that role or not, person on the Worthing City website and said, I, I see links for your, for your zoning ordinances and your, your planning documents, they're dead links. Can you send me the documents? Because I want to have the same conversation with you. We want to be a good neighbor. Because I had heard the reputation of Worthing, they were pitchforks and torches against the, the stockyards, pitchforks and torches against Zion Energy a couple of years ago and chased those people off of the site. So I was trying to be a good neighbor and reach out to, uh, to Worthing and was told, I can't send you the document, I don't have anything to send you. I'm not sure what more we could do.
You said that previously.
Yes.
Zion Energy wanted to site there?
Somewhere in close proximity, I understand, yeah.
In close proximity?
Yeah. I don't know if it's that precise site or not, sir. So I think that those conversations about finding ways to make this compatible, we made that effort 60, 75 days ago, um, and we didn't get, didn't get anything in response. Then after the planning and zoning meeting on March 15th, we appeared before the Worthing City Council on March 19th, I think it was, to get their feedback and start a dialogue. Uh, likewise, on April 5th, we went to the Canton City Council meeting to have that same dialogue. Uh, and on, and last week, we had a public meeting. And those conversations and that input and that dialogue all relate to the operation of the plant that can be dealt with through the conditional use process. So if they want trees planted, they want, uh, berms built, they want things on the site to change, to make it more compatible with what they believe is going to happen west of Worthing, we are all ears. But I, as to your specific question as to the planned development zoning, I don't think it's appropriate, uh, for a single use. And I think the same objectives and, uh, goals that could be accomplished through a planned zoning discussion can happen, uh, as we're, as we currently exist through the conditional use process. And we tried to have those same, same conversations that the planned zoning, uh, development brings about in this process.
Thank you, Paul.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Chutter?
If I could address about three very quick things.
Five minutes?
Less than that, I promise.
Perfect.
Uh, several commenters, uh, commented on the two-year agreement, uh, with the township. What was discussed with the township is that our construction timeline is about two years. And so what made sense is, let's have a game plan for two years to maintain the road. And after construction is completed, whatever is built there under the rezone discussion, then we're going to improve the road to make sure it can handle the traffic that's going to be needed on that road. So we're not trying to, uh, sell the township a bag of goods. We're not trying to sell the city a bag of goods. We're trying to be a good neighbor. Uh, and in every instance where they think there's been an inconsistency, it's a lack of understanding, um, or miscommunication, because we've been upfront with people in every conversation along the way. This site will never get any bigger than the footprint that we're going to build for the processing facility. This is not a slaughterhouse. This is not somewhere that, uh, the offal is rendered and the scent that comes off of that. This is processing fresh and frozen cuts of beef. Uh, and all of that is treated through a DAF unit. It's in my letter, we can, you can look at that as, uh, as the specific use. But those concerns I don't think are founded. As to compatibility, you know, I, I agree with Mike, Mr. Nadolsky, that it's in the eye of the beholder. Uh, your constituency is much greater than a neighborhood, it is much greater than a community, it's the county, uh, that are, that you're serving. And this project, rezoning this to general industrial will be a catalyst for the whole county. The school concern, I think, is misplaced. Two years of construction, uh, and ramping up of whatever, uh, facility is installed there is going to give the, that school, the school district the time it needs, plus, as Mr. Colburn mentioned, $400,000 plus of tax revenue each year, uh, to local governments, the bulk of which goes to the schools. In terms of emergency facilities, uh, I spoke with the, uh, James Miller, I believe is his name, he's the contact on the Worthing City website. And he said there are no unique challenges to what is planned at this site or it being a general industrial site that they don't face with the grain facility across the interstate or other industrial uses around the City of Worthing. So it's a bit of a red herring. In terms of runoff, uh, any building process is going to need a stormwater protection permit to ensure that there's not runoff through the construction, uh, of the, of the project. But as a rezone question, it's going to be CRP the day after it's rezoned. Uh, it's, that's not going to change. So all of those issues of runoff, roads, uh, what does it look like? How does it impact the neighborhood? All of that is part of the discussion to be had in the coming weeks and months ahead. The comprehensive plan identifies objectives that Lincoln County is seeking to accomplish. And rezoning this 20 acres as general industrial will help accomplish those objectives and help, uh, the City of Worthing and Lincoln County generally experience positive growth by bringing a new employer, uh, and new employees, uh, to the county. And I would appreciate your support in approving the rezone this morning. Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and, uh, close the public hearing and then, um, just open it
I'm going to start jumping off the table here on this one very quickly. I do think we need to separate slightly the, uh, event that needs to be, uh, considered today from what is proposed, uh, potentially down the road. We look at, um, the I-29 corridor as a infrastructure for, um, areas for redevelopment. We rezoned the livestock facility to the north some time back, sale barn and commercial area. We've done that similar on Lennox exit and areas along here. So when I look at what is the best use for this land, um, and the request to rezone this to, um, the zoning that he has, or what would like, I don't know that it's in conflict of our overall desire that we've looked at over the years. There are definitely some issues that have to get resolved, and I think that can get handled through the conditional use permit specific to the project that may or may not be proposed for that site. So to get things off the table here, I will move to approve the rezoning.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the rezone. Is there a second?
I'm going to second for the purposes of discussion.
Thank you. The motion and a second by Commissioner Aaron's for purposes of discussion. So I'll open it up for further discussion. So, I'll open it up for further discussion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Before we rush to judgment here, I, we have been instructed to be judges. I have been schooled on that to make sure that we properly understand the total ramifications of these, of these issues. And what's always troubled me is that in one hour, we're supposed to digest all of these pertinent facts. And I don't dispute anything that Mr. Cheddar has said. I think he's made a valid point on answering questions. I look at the amount of material that was supplied by the residents of Worthing and their sincerity for their future, for their locale. And you can call me whatever you want, but I would rather have some time to adequately digest this. And I don't know that postponing or tabling this for a week to look through all of these issues that we're here this morning would be a, to me, would be a valid use of our time. And that's, I guess, Commissioner Poppins, while you may have that issue, I'm a little bit more slow and would like to see this delayed at least a week to give us proper time to investigate. Because as you know, this is now, our time can go out and we can look at this stuff. I mean, I think every commissioner here has been down the road. We've sat there, looked at it, had all that. But that's from my standpoint.
If I may, Madam Chairman, I have no objection to postponing this. Just trying to separate, making sure that we separate and look at this as a rezoning issue versus what will be coming as a condition use permit for what may or may not be coming in the future, so. Madam?
Madam Chair, one more thing. The thing that I think about this is that while we're talking about rezoning, we can take the rezone part over here, and if we didn't have an issue with a new facility that can come into our community that has a great deal of support, I understand that from a tax base, that has a great deal of support from the state, from the cattle producers, talk to all that. On the other hand, if that wasn't an issue, would the rezoning be the same? But to me, when we look at the rezoning part, we're entaciting approval of this particular facility, whether that's right or wrong. I think that's the baby gorilla that sits right on our shoulder here today. So, I look at this and saying, if we wait a week, what have we got to lose?
I'll yield to Commissioner Aaron's if you'd like, otherwise I have a response to that as well.
Go ahead, Mike.
I don't disagree that there may be a perception, but this is absolutely a rezoning for the property. We look at what is the best use of this, this parcel of land in the future. We've faced this many, many times, and what we look at today may not be what's in the future, but is it the best use of that land in the, in the, you know, years to come? Is it a best use for residential? Is it a best use for commercial? Is it best use for industrial? And that's the question that I have to answer today and/or in a week or in two weeks, whichever. We do have the ability, and it does not automatically give a approval for what is potentially looked at, because we have not delved into all of those issues and should not, I don't believe, at this time when looking at just land use.
I don't disagree with you, Commissioner, at all from what you said, but I would ask to be able to table this for
I have no objection to that.
For a week to give commissioners and myself enough time to digest this.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
So, first of all, I want to make one disclosure. I did have a citizen call me and attempted to lobby me on this. So, if that's considered ex parte contact, fine. Didn't prejudice me or my vote in any way. But I was polite and we had a nice conversation about it. But I did want to put that on the record, that I was contacted by someone lobbying me against the application. So, but with that said, I agree with both Commissioners, Poppins and Schmidt. Jim, I don't like the fact that we have to make these big decisions split second. The problem is, in South Dakota, we like streamlined government, and we like, in the courtroom, we like rulings from the bench, and it feels like you never get an opportunity to have a reasoned balancing of all the factors of consideration. So, number one, I agree with any kind of proposal you may make here after this to table. Hopefully, that is contingent upon a very specific timeline. Second of all, I agree with Commissioner Poppins. This is a, this is an application for rezone today. It's not a conditional use permit hearing, which means that many of the concerns that I heard today on the part of the people of Worthing and other opponents, and, and let me just digress for a moment. I appreciate the fact that the conversation today was very reasoned. We can disagree without being disagreeable, and I think everyone was very respectful today towards each other. But I agree with Commissioner Poppins. Many of the concerns heard today were conditional use permit concerns and issues that can be dealt with at a conditional use permit hearing, not at a rezone hearing. In fact, and, you know, legal counsel, you can correct me on this, we can't attach conditions to a rezone, correct? Right. I'm hearing his, he is nodding. Yes. We cannot attach conditions to a rezone. So, the request from many of the opponents today that you've made just simply cannot be considered today legally by this board. But I understand where you're coming from. You don't want the horse to get out of the barn in the first place. And I went through this in my own neighborhood when they built Walmart up there at 85th Street. And it's one of the, and I tell this story all the time with these high tension, high friction zoning cases. It's one of the reasons I ran for the county commission. I felt like the city of Sioux Falls at that time was just simply using brute force zoning measures where they didn't take into consideration what the neighbors were saying. At the same time, we have to balance that with growth and development. Just simply put, we cannot shut down all growth and development moving forward. We would all like to have nice satellite manufacturing companies that have no smell and everybody drives a nice vehicle to the, to the manufacturing plant, and they produce no pollution, and there's no harmful side effects. But South Dakota is not recruiting a lot of satellite manufacturing companies. We are an ag-based state, and we are in the business of producing ag-based developments. For example here, and I want to go down this list. City of Worthing Board of Commissioners provided us with a, with a document here. And what they said in here, they listed a number of permissive uses, or excuse me, they list a number of planning policies and goals expressed within the Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan. And I just want to state a few of these. One of them is to discourage premature development in municipal fringe areas. Absolutely. The, the issue I have there, though, is, is it offset at the boundary site because of the location of the stockyards that's already there? Seek input of municipal officials in the review of the development proposals. Yeah, I think the county may have fell down there. But at the same time, we've held this hearing and we've taken everybody's voices into consideration. So, I think that's been offset. In fact, they have legal counsel who's adequately representing them. Here is another planning consideration, though, and this is what folks, frankly, nobody on either side has mentioned this. Concentrate future non-farm growth in proximity of municipalities where infrastructure can be economically provided. Excuse me, I got ahead of myself. That was listed. The problem is, that's non-farm growth. This is, this proposed rezone, and what I'm hearing from the applicants, would be considered agricultural-based farm growth. So, I don't think that planning consideration is applicable here. Here is the next one, though, that I wanted to point out. This is, this is one of the planning considerations here in Lincoln County. Facilitate agribusiness activities at appropriate sites in the rural, commercial, industrial areas. City of Worthing, you didn't point that out. That isn't, that is in our planning considerations as well. Facilitating agribusiness at appropriate sites. I guess the issue would be whether this is an appropriate site. But that is a planning consideration. Another one is discourage strip development along transportation arteries, particularly those which serve as gateways to the cities. So, in terms of our planning considerations, there's a little bit of something for everybody in here. I'm not ready to decide today. We do need to make a bright line distinction between rezoning and conditional use permits. Many, many, many of the concerns I heard today are concerns that can be adequately addressed within a conditional use permit hearing. The issue I'm, I am, what I'm not enthused about in this process is, I heard the city of Worthing say, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have a problem with you citing here, we just want you to use a planned development district. Is that correct? Or did I misunderstand?
To the mic.
Yeah.
I didn't rephrase that, Commissioner. I think, first of all, they do not think it would be appropriate to move this property into a different district. But if you feel that it's in the best interest to do so, I guess what I'm saying is to utilize the planned development district.
So, it's an alternative argument?
It's an alternative argument for the entire section.
Right.
Or a quarter section, I should say. It's not just the 20. You have, you have a, you have a quarter section in the I-2 district, which you administratively changed and moved around. So, it is an alternative to the no vote, yes. That be accurate?
Thanks, Mike. So, clearly, I mean, I'm frustrated with this process. I'm frustrated with what happened in my own neighborhood several years ago. I was so frustrated that I took the case on, took it to the Supreme Court and lost, but we got two votes. And our third vote was one of the justices who had to recuse herself. So, I've been through this. I understand what you're going through. And that was a very long struggle as well. And I felt like city of Sioux Falls in that instance just was not hearing us. They were not listening to us. They were not doing, you know, they didn't do what we wanted, right? But at the same time, that's the whole purpose of zoning is we, and I said to myself after that, can I find a way to thread the needle in the future? Can we find a way to have growth and development, but do so in a smarter way? And that's why, if you probably can hear from my comments, I'm kind of stuck up on this whole offer by the city of Worthing, Worthing, excuse me, to do a planned development district. But what I'm hearing from the proponents is, that's just not acceptable. It's out of their timeline. And I don't like the fact that, I don't like the fact that they couldn't come together and find some kind of settlement compromise here from both sides. And I wish both sides could have sat down earlier and tried to talk this through and find a way to thread the needle. So, I've got no problem tabling on a strict timeline where we could come back and discuss it. Commissioner Schmidt says he wants to do more investigation. The one thing I would say is, you can't do any investigation outside of this hearing. You got to have another public meeting to do it. So, I just, if that's what he means by investigation.
That's, you bring up a good point, and that's exactly my point. We get phone call after phone call about these things. We are not to be lobbied by the public or the applicant on how this thing moves forward. So, my question is really, what would change in the next week? I don't think anything. So, I am ready to vote on this today in that respect. I don't think a week is going to buy us anything, one way or the other. This thing has been set for a second public hearing for some time now. We had our first reading. This went through the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, if you're not up to speed on it and haven't been out there to look at things, I don't, I don't know who to blame for that. But I don't think we can do any investigation outside of this hearing. So, I would, we ask that we move forward on our vote.
Madam Chair, I, I don't, I don't, very seldom do I ever disagree with you, but I look at this from the standpoint. Commissioner Aaron's has made several valid points, as Commissioner Poppins has. If, what I find unbelievable, ladies and gentlemen, you and I are not attorneys or all of that, but the inability for somebody to do or learn more issues on their own is somehow prohibited by law, as we are supposed to make these decisions just on the facts that come to us, in front of us, which limits us to ever check anything out, which makes absolutely no sense to me whatsoever. But then, my degree was not in being a jurist doctorate. I just was a poor social, poor social studies degree. When you are making a major decision on purchasing something, you usually sleep on it for 24 hours. For me, I'd like to sleep on this for a week. So, I'm going to make, if Commissioner Poppins, we have a motion on the, on the floor. I would respectfully ask you to withdraw that, and Commissioner Aaron's, withdraw your second.
It's a privilege amendment. You can simply table it at this point, the action.
Okay. I would, I would ask that we would table this until our meeting on March 4th, which is one week from today.
May 4th.
May 4th, excuse me. May 4th, one week from today, where we will make our final decision.
And then, we have to readadvertise? We do not.
You close the public hearing unless you would want to ask for additional testimony at the next meeting, then you would have to advertise.
I'm not going to ask for any additional testimony at the next hearing.
Yeah, I think now is the time and place for the hearing, Madam. I think now is the time and place for the hearing. If any commissioner wants to ask somebody, they should quick get their question in now.
I'm not asking for any more information.
In need of a second, I will second the motion to table to respect that, the request.
So, I have a motion by Schmidt and a second by Commissioner Poppins to table.
For one week until the next hearing?
Until the next hearing.
Or next, not hearing, next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll call the question.
All right. Sean, go ahead.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Move on to item number four on our agenda. Good morning, Terry.
Good morning. So, I'm here to bring you, give you an update on structure 42148050, which is the Lake Galvin Bridge. Back in December of 2020, if you recall, we applied for a build grant for this structure. That structure at the time was going to be about 110-foot bridge. We are going to replace with what was there. Late in December, we received word from the DOT that there's some artesian springs where the abutments would sit for this new structure. Our application was already in, so we had to scramble and came up with two other options for a structure on this to put in that grant. We came up with a box culvert option and then a bridge option, which is really, really large. So, the box culvert option is a six-barrel, 12 by 11. So six barrels, 12 foot by 11 foot. And then the other option is about 160-foot-long bridge, steel girder bridge. So I... We ended up going through the grant process. We ended up not getting our grant for this bridge. We were two bridges out of the money for it. So now, we get to go back through the TSNL on this bridge to figure out what we want to put there for a structure so we can reapply for a grant. So again, I am looking for direction from you guys since Nine Mile Creek is high-profile, a lot of controversy on it. So box culvert, again, it's a six-barrel, 12 by 11. Or the bridge is 160-foot-long bridge. Cost difference on these is the box culvert's going to be about 1.2, 1.3 million. The bridge is going to be about 1.8, somewhere in there. Now, the box culvert that we want to put in, or if we're going to do the box, road grade and everything is going to be the same as what it is now, what it currently is. The bridge, we'll have to do about a five-and-a-half-foot road raise with the bridge. One thing with the bridge is it will alleviate, for the most part, over-topping issues that we have at this location. Now, typical over-topping in this place, we've been anywhere between four and five-and-a-half-foot of water over-topping the structure in the past. So again, if I go with a box, we're going to be looking at same grade as we are. Bridge, it's going to be a five-and-a-half-foot road raise, which would probably take any topping issue out of the, you know, out of our problems.
Terry?
I do have Kevin Goff is here with IMEG to answer any technical questions you would have on this. So...
Terry, I have a question.
Yes.
With the amount of growth in water that Nine Mile Creek will continue to experience, will the bridge accommodate? That will accommodate more of that added flow than your box culvert, right? I... Or not?
That might be...
Kevin?
That might be more of a Kevin...
Good morning, Mr. Goff.
Yes? Hello. Kevin Goff from IMEG, formerly Clark Engineering. That's the heart of the question. This is a really unique site, so I'm going to back up a little bit and give you guys some elevations to think about. Let me look at something to make sure I get those right. The road at 110 that we're thinking about has an elevation of 13, 18.5. So 18.5 is a number to remember. The interaction in that five-foot that happens a lot is a backwater impact. It's not the water coming down Nine Mile that's over-topping the bridge and flowing over it. At 135, we're all familiar with that crossing. We've had some over-toppings there. We've got those really, really deep pipes. The elevation at 135 is 13, 22.5. So when the water backs up there at that location due to those two pipes downstream of the dam, is everybody familiar with where I'm talking about? That actually causes a four-foot backwater that goes back over the existing bridge.
That answers...
The existing bridge is not as hydraulically incapable as it seems because it keeps getting overtopped. The problem is at 135. There's a backwater effect.
So it's overtopping and flowing south instead of north?
Yes. It's just filling the basin up more. The lake is getting...
So then this truly...
The dam becomes the road.
This almost truly just becomes a financial, do we spend the 1.3 versus 1.8 and potentially have the road closed when the other road is backed up and topping over as well, so?
The other side of that that caused me concern, and we kind of were making the recommendation is, and I'm not speaking to... Obviously, you guys might get a big grant, and this wouldn't necessarily be your funds. But at some point, I think there's general realization that something's going to have to be done at 135 to improve that situation. And spending an extra $600,000 to put this bridge in versus the box culvert...
That $600,000 could be spent down there.
Well, it potentially could. A public fund, sure. But the funding sources might make that different, whether it's county or other, because there aren't a lot of federal options at 135.
Because that day is coming.
So...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That day is coming that we have to address with the state.
And that was the thing that we just felt like, and I think Terry wanted me to try to explain that a little better. The circumstances of that box culvert or the bridge, either one of those are going to be... And the bridge that's there now, it really performs just fine. It really is that backwater from those downstream culverts. The spillway of the dam, the dam is actually, if we can get that back, if we can improve the crossing at 135 such that the water surface didn't get back up and go back over the dam. It doesn't, the dam doesn't fail. The dam can pass the flow, but the area between the dam and the road fills up and floods back. If we could fix that, the dam is actually at 16.5. That's the earth. The spillway is actually like eight feet below that. So there's two foot from that road down to the top of the dam. So if we could fix that crossing at 135, we could save $600,000 on this structure. The one other thing that I think was the straw that broke the camel's back, and Terry had me come down, that artesian water. So when we build a bridge, we put piling in. They're H-shaped or I-shaped, depending on which angle you look at them. They drive those down into the ground 60, 70 feet, and that's what the bridge sits on, its foundation. When we pierce an artesian well, which means that there's water pressure underneath that will cause that water to come up, it can reduce the skin friction on those piles, which means we have to drive more pile, which gets cost prohibitive. And my big concern with doing that... And that's the reason that the bridge went from being 110 to 160, because we're trying to move out beyond that. But the construction risk of this project, the opportunity for that to become a problem, and it happens every few years. There's one going on in Brookings right now where they're driving pile, and they've got water coming out, and it's a mess. And it costs a lot of money to fix. So there's some construction risk. And if we were to go to a big grant, the grant amount is fixed, that construction risk or that change order would come to you guys. So to me, I just wanted, and I think I'm seeing some heads now, I wanted you guys to understand that if you really feel like in the next five years or 10 years you're going to do something with 135, or you could even accelerate that, it might make sense to do something there versus spending an extra $600,000 at this bridge.
How often is the over-topping? An eight-year event, a 100-year event, a 500-year event? I mean, I know the over-topping, because I saw your truck out there a couple of years ago. And I think you were probably sitting there at midnight, weren't you? And then we had the, you know, we had a couple of driveways closed to Lake Galvin there.
So I think since we've been having water issues 2012-ish, 2010, I think 2010 might have been the first year where we had some issues with those pipe by the dam where they took and just sucked in, and we had them fixed. So even, so back to 2010, topping the bridge on one, the Lake Galvin Bridge, we probably had six, eight times in those years that we've had some over-topping at the bridge, you know? And a couple of those years was due to the fact that the structure, the downstream structure, those pipe had sucked in, and they just didn't have any flow to them at all, you know? So then that initiated all the backup as well. So that didn't help as well. 2019, when we had the huge, again, 2019 was the five-and-a-half-foot. That's where I got the pictures. And in that year, it topped over the highway where those other pipe are down by the dam. It topped that highway by three foot, you know? So I think if we do something with that downstream structure, if that's where we're going to put that on the plan to do, I think we could get by with doing the box at the Lake Galvin site, the bridge site, you know? Because the way it was explained to me is those pipe are the controlling factor for all the backup that had, that leads to the topping on the bridge.
And then does putting the box culvert in going to cause any concern downstream? More, you know, because it's going to create more throughput, right?
They'll both pass the same flow. It's just a matter of whether it's over the road or under the road. And really, it's not a flow issue. It's a storage issue when it's just a backwater impact from 135. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I think I know what you're saying. But what my concern is, putting different culverts in isn't going to damage somebody downstream.
No.
Our flow rates are approximately the same with either structure. It's just over the top under the, or through the bridge as they are currently, correct?
Yeah. The situation with the artesian wells has really allowed us to... Don't tell anybody from the DOT this, but we've inflated the flows. We've, so we're kind of tied to some regression equations in South Dakota that help us come up with those flows, and they're really dated. And obviously, we know Nine Mile is a tricky animal, to say the least, when it comes to us trying to do water modeling. But we did reach out and use some modeling procedures that come from Iowa and from Minnesota, which are regionally compatible with where we're at here. And those flows do show higher flows, which maybe is an indication of what we're seeing sometimes. And both of these bridges, if we fix the downstream such that we don't backwater over the dam at 135, either one of these structures will be closer to the 500-year over-topping. Of course, we've said that, but we have 100-year event and over-top roads every other year in Lincoln County. So sometimes I don't know whether I really want to say those numbers, but...
I apologize for lingering this when I think you have your answer. But can you tell me, from the top of the box culvert to the top of the road as proposed, will there be much of a distance there?
The box culvert's going to fit in underneath the bridge, and the road's not going to change a lot.
But can you tell me, is it a distance? Is it literally the box culvert and then the road surface? Or there's, will there be...
It's going to be two or three feet.
Not significant. That was my question.
Yeah, two or three feet. It will, no, it will not be at all like 135, no.
All right.
So do you need an official action today, Terry?
I don't know if I need, well, I don't know if I need an official action because I don't think I requested official action. I just, again, I am looking just for a direction to go. I guess I'm okay with the box. As long as we, as long as you guys are okay with me putting in the plan sometime in the next five, seven years about doing something with the downstream structures. And that could be costly because it's not a structure.
But it sounds...
It's big money.
It sounds like it needs to happen anyway.
I don't want to correct you. It isn't that it could be, it will be.
Right, right, correct.
Yeah.
You know, so the options are box or the bridge. If we're going to do the, if we're going to do the box, then we can proceed with plans, and I can get, hopefully get plans ready to apply for the big grant next year. If I can have plans ready for the grant this fall, that'll give us an extra 10 points, which I would hope it would... I hate to use the word guarantee, but we should be in the money.
Terry, how many boxes would it be then?
It'd be six barrels.
Six barrels.
Yep. They're 12-foot by 11-foot, six barrels.
I don't think you've heard any opposition to that. Is there any?
Nope.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense. Okay.
That makes sense.
If any of you have questions, further questions, please get ahold of me. Like I said, I'm okay with it. I just want to make sure that, you know, I know that Nine Mile is kind of a touchy thing, but, so, all right?
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Go ahead and move on to item five. I did, I put this on the agenda just to talk about the mask mandate and getting rid of it for the administrative side of the courthouse. There's some schools that have gotten rid of the mask mandate. The department heads here in the building have met, from what I understand, and they are in favor, along with the employees by and large, to get rid of the mask mandate. Obviously, if people want to wear masks, they certainly can. Just wanting to put that out there and see what the thoughts of the board are.
Yeah, Madam Chair. I mean, there just comes a point in time at which you go from doing what we all thought was the right thing to what is now the right thing. And we were in a global pandemic. We didn't know what the science was. To a certain extent, it's still up in the air with regard to masks. But I've been vaccinated. I think a lot of the members of this commission are vaccinated. I think a lot of people in society are. I just will put this pitch out there. I encourage people to go get the vaccination if they want to, if they're so inclined to. And there just comes a point in time, though, where the mandate actually hurts more than what it helps because we need to be encouraging people to get vaccinated, to move on from this mask. And I don't know if we even need to take action on this, do we? Because hasn't it expired?
I don't know that it's technically expired. I think I can make the call, but I just wanted to get everyone's thoughts on it before I did that.
I would be in favor of removing the mandate at this time.
Madam Chair, I think you got a choice. If you choose to wear one, you can. If you don't want to, you don't have to. It's up to an individual. So therefore, I agree. You could, if I choose to wear one, that's my choice. If I don't, that's my choice.
Well, and it is in line, even with the administrative building in our neighborhood of the north. Masks are not mandated on the administrative side. But obviously, if you want to wear one, wear one. If you don't, don't.
I agree with you, Madam Chair.
All right. So with that, I'm going to, I guess, let that expire, like, as of right now. And I'm looking around, there's some masks coming off, so, all right. I think more people are ready for it than not. So we'll go ahead with that. And then we'll just move on to item six, which is ARC Inc., Additional Funds for Courthouse Administration Building Space Studies. Mr. Golden, are you going to take care of that?
The Architect Inc. went ahead and supplied their rate sheet, which was the request from the last meeting so they knew what the billings would be going forward. And they were offering to go ahead and to continue with a, at a hourly rate on the courthouse committee, and that they would offer a cap to those services. And of course, they would only bill it out for the work that they were asked to do.
And what was the hourly rate?
Did I send that to you, Sean? Yeah, I'm cutting it down as well. Because I have an email that says rate sheet, and I have nothing attached. Let me see if I can locate it.
I know they sent it because you sent it to me, Bill.
Yeah.
But that's in my email inbox, which I don't have available.
Because they were asking for a cap of $12,000. And then, I believe, the lead architect, I thought it was 150, is what I had seen. There we go. So senior architect was $200 an hour, architect was 150, the project designer is 85, and the administrative is 85. And then they had principal architect at 165 an hour, project designer at 90, and $85 an hour for a designer.
I'm leaving this up to the two individuals that serve on that committee to give us some guidance on if it's appropriate to get them through the completion of their meeting cycles, so?
Yeah. The reason we brought this forward, Commissioner Poppins, was because we're now turning to the phase with the meetings where we've got to start producing hard drawings, hard renderings. And we're beyond the needs assessment now, which ARC Inc. helped us develop. But we're now at the point now where we need to start putting specific plans and drawings in place.
A question. We haven't hired ARC Inc. to do, to act as an architect, I guess, to come up with what we're actually going to do. Fair statement?
Correct.
So are we, I mean, the design and build and all that, I'm assuming we'd go out for RFPs at some point? So are we, I don't know that I want to keep paying for something that we haven't even decided who our architect is.
Here's what we're running.
That's the issue I'm having. And I understand, I understand what you're trying to do. I'm just trying to figure out why we're spending money with this one company who has not been hired to design anything that we need.
No, it's a good question. And here's a response, Madam Chair, is in all the research I've done with these different county commissions around the country who hold these courthouse improvement committees, they always produce a rendering of what the committee envisions as putting forth for consideration to the commission. It doesn't preclude the commission from later on saying, OK, ARC Inc., thank you for getting us to where we are at this point, but now we're going to do RFPs once we have the vision and the concept. So the point of ARC Inc. is simply to get the committee into a place where it can produce and provide those drawings and renderings to not only the committee, but to the public so that they can see what the committee has produced. And then my, you know, what I would envision then at that point is once the committee produces its report, then it comes back in front of the commission for action at that point. And that's just typical of what I've seen around the country with different county commissions.
Thank you for that, Commissioner.
Madam Chair.
Yep, go ahead.
I would like us to, at this time, do the RFP. The unfortunate problem is I do believe this is extremely time-sensitive. And not to say that I'm extremely thrilled with how Architect Incorporated has maybe done in our past history by some of the projects that we've had to fix. I do think it is time-sensitive, and if they're willing to keep, keep it capped at $12,000, it probably moves us forward as quickly as we can at this time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Poppins, I would emphasize that as well.
Thank you. And I know, Commissioner Aaronz, have you, in speaking with Judge Howman, and I'm certainly not going to speak for her, have, has the committee reached out to the state, I think it's the Association of State Courts regarding security and that sort of thing, and how that would would play into the design?
Yeah, I had, I've had several, so no, I have not talked to Judge Howman about that. Yes, I've had several people reach out to me about us asking the, whatever they're called, Association of State Courts, to see if they could assist us. I'm trying to reach back in my memory. I think that the needs assessment that was performed by ARC Inc. essentially or partially substituted in part for what this this association would do. I'm not opposed to it. I'm certainly for it. But Judge Howman did give some testimony to the extent that she believed that the discussion she had with ARC Inc. was what UJS wanted to see happen. I'm not trying to dance around it. I just, you know, if we need to reach out to them for for security issues, we can. I have no objection to that. I'd be for that. But she seemed to indicate in one of our meetings that she had given very specific or given some kind of guidance to ARC Inc. in developing our our square footage.
Mr. Chairman, or Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would offer a motion to authorize the signature of this contract to extend to $12,000 for the purpose of drawings and renderings for the the court systems.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins? Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landin?
I'm in Epstein. Go ahead and move on to item seven, item six, that motion carried. We'll move on to item seven. We have City of Lennox coming up. Nathan, good morning.
Morning, morning.
Patience, very patient.
I I I had planned on it being a lengthy meeting, and that's, that's well within our ability to sit through that, so. I'm just providing information today on a solution to a problem we see growing in rural Lennox, rural Lincoln County and as well as Turner County. We've already approached Worthing, Chancellor, and Turner County about this. Their their governing boards on the same kind of basis, providing the same information. Many of you know Lennox has an ambulance service, two ambulances, a full-time director, two lead medics as well, and those are housed out of a city building there in Lennox, owned and operated by the city. The ambulance service has a nonprofit site as well, and they raise money through their annual soup supper, although that's been a remote donation this year, but still very worthwhile. But the the problem we've been seeing growing over the past several years is that use of that ambulance service continues to grow. And the highest level of growth is coming from those rural areas outside of Lennox. This ambulance service, just like most ambulance services, does not make money. It loses money every year. Last year, COVID-19 funding was helpful. It paid for our wages for three-quarters of the year. Even with that, we still lost, lost money last year. So generally, how these services are run are they, they, they bill for their claims. You know, they bill claims to health insurance for that transportation. Often, we respond to calls that don't require transportation, or the patient declines transportation. And so those are essentially free calls that they don't have any reimbursement for. In any given year, we budget for a loss of anywhere from $20,000 to $60,000 in the city, city budget. State law says we have to make up that shortage every year within that ambulance fund. And so what we end up doing is transferring it from another fund and making up that shortage to get to a zero balance at the beginning of the next fiscal year. But as that, as that use continues to grow, we're going to see that that loss continue to increase without significant changes to how ambulance services are funded. So the Lennox ambulance service serves about 190 square miles, mostly in Lincoln County, but also in Turner County. And the funding from claims is insufficient, and so we have this shortfall we have to make up. State law does have a solution for such issues in the formation of an ambulance district. There are some ambulance districts already existing in South Dakota. I think Parkston is probably the closest, Lake Norden. It's really not all that similar or all that different from a fire district. So you see fire districts mostly out in the western states. You have two larger fire districts in western, western South Dakota as well, West River. And Parkston also has a fire district. And so what that district allows you to do is it sets up another governing body, taxing jurisdiction, for the sole purpose of supplying a emergency medical service for that district. State law does cap what those levies can be. I think it's 40 cents, 60 cents per thousand for the property tax levy and 40 cents per thousand for the for the capital levy. And we, we believe that we would be well under that gap based on our initial look at what the budget would look like for those. So there, there are two processes to doing this. Voters can either petition all the governing bodies, or every governing body can consider a resolution, a resolution of necessity. So that that resolution process is our preferred process. We've asked our city engineers to prepare that resolution because it has to include all of the deal descriptions and properties of the district. As you can imagine, with 189 square miles, that's going to take some time. But I don't know how much time. It should be simpler here in Lincoln County because of your GIS system. Turner County will probably take a little bit more time. That's not a computer system that goes through, they have to go through all the individual plots there. So after that resolution is considered, both counties would then be coming together for a joint public hearing and determining whether or not an election is warranted. And if so, they would set the election for 60 days, within 60 days later. We, like I mentioned, we have spoken with all the other governing bodies at this point. There may be changes to the boundary of that district. I think Turner County and Chancellor both requested more information on whether we would be willing to take more, more territory. And I think that would be particularly useful in in Turner County, given their population size and the difficulty they have staffing their ambulances as well. So if if that were to happen, we would have to, it would probably take a bit longer to get that resolution set. In our meeting with Worthing, Auditor Lund was at that meeting as well. And we've spoken since about the timing of such an election. Given the cost of those elections, I think it may make sense to look at whether we polled that election next year or this year. As if it's held with the regular election, that's a significant savings to the county. I think $16,000, $17,000 for any given election that's held countywide. So I think that's something that we would be willing to discuss. At this point, we just wanted to provide information and open up the opportunity for questions and discussion prior to consideration of an actual resolution.
That was my only question, Nathan, is what do you think about the timing of the election? And you answered that. And I think not only do you get a cost savings, but you get a better census of what the people are thinking at a general election, too. Can you guys wait that long?
We've waited 40 years to this point. My preference would be to have done this two years ago.
Sure.
But the timing is what it is. And if, you know, I, it comes down to cost savings. And if that makes sense for the county and the cities altogether, I don't see any reason why we couldn't move in that direction, so.
Madam Chair, one question?
Uh, yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Actually, question and statement.
You made reference you were losing $20,000 to $60,000 a year?
In any given year, yeah.
How long have you been doing that?
Every year, I would imagine. I don't know that it's ever made money. So if you look at the last slide on the first page, slide four, you'll see in, it looks like 17, that loss is way, way down there, around 100 and some thousand, 100 and probably $185,000. That's actually several years of losses combined. For whatever reason, for a number of years, they did not write those losses off at the end of the year and transfer, transfer additional revenue from another fund. So that's more than likely three or four years' worth of losses combined into one year there.
Thank you. Commissioner Poppins has the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a, I like to say, proudly had a daughter serve with the Lennox Ambulance and get a perspective from her, from her service when she was, was there after graduating high school. As one of the few places that a young EMT can service or serve, she was very proud to do so. My question is, is if you go through this, will you change your structure at all of how you staff the ambulance service? Is there any desire to try to get to having more full-time or additional full-time or individuals that can get out to calls any quicker?
I think as with any emergency service right now, staffing is is the main challenge.
Thank you.
We are always hiring.
Sir, if you're just, if you're going to address the board, will you just state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Alan Perry. I'm the Director of EMS. I live in Lennox.
Thank you.
I do see that happening, probably not initially. But as the call volume grows, because we all know the county's growing very rapidly, our call volume's going to continue to grow. And we are going to get to a point where we're going to have more full-time staff that's going to be there. There's just no doubt about it. It's going to have to happen.
Thank you.
I think one of the points I highlighted in the, in the news article that I provided for, for the commission is that volunteer-driven services are simply not going to be the future of EMS anywhere. They, they don't have, they don't have the same draw that they used to. I think that's the same case for for fire departments as well, so.
Isn't it true, it's a lot of the requirements that, for your training and stuff like that? I mean, it used to be when, when I was a young person out of high school, you volunteer for the local fire department. It was pretty easy. You went and signed up. Now you've got ongoing training, and I'm assuming it's similar for the ambulance service. It's just hard to find people that are willing to not only serve, but get the training and do the ongoing training.
Yep.
Thank you.
From the City of Lennox, excuse me, Madam Chair.
I was going to give Commissioner Gibbon the chair. He had questions, and I had cut him off because I didn't think he heard me actually address Commissioner Poppins. So I'm going to give it back to Commissioner Gibbon right now.
Thank you. I was at the Worthing meeting. I guess I heard the response that night, but how was it received in some of the other places? I know you made reference Chancellor wanted more information, but but what other responses have you had?
Worthing and Chancellor, start with Chancellor, I guess. Chancellor is a bit of an odd one for us because we only serve about the eastern third of the community. There's a dividing line there where the western part of the town is served by Parker Ambulance. So there was some discussion around whether that makes sense. We don't, nobody seems to know how boundaries for EMS were originally set. There's nothing in state law. There's nothing in county or city ordinances. They just are there. And so I, I think there's going to be discussions with those neighboring services on, you know, are there areas where we want to pick up or can pick up? And are there territories that want to give up some space that is difficult for them to serve or just an unusual area? If you look west of T, for example, you'll see a diagonal line cutting across multiple miles of property. That, that line is going to make taxation a major headache, I think, for, for, for this jurisdiction. And we'd like to straighten that line out, for example. Our meeting with Turner County was very positive as well. Some of the very similar questions that we had in Chancellor about taking other territory. And I know Turner County has been looking at, at this for years about, you know, there are four ambulance services in Turner County, five, five ambulance services in Turner County.
So will there be additional costs to townships as well? Because I know as, as a resident of Grant Township and on that board, we, we were approached by the Lennox Volunteer Fire Department and, and also the Worthing Volunteer Fire Department to make donations because of lack of funding and, well, other issues as well. So I guess, will, will this be additional cost to townships as well?
It would be additional cost to township residents, not necessarily to townships. So creating this district would create this tax levy. It would be every property, every property not otherwise exempt from the property taxes would pay that levy on whatever property they own within that district. So it would be an increased cost to, to every resident of that district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schmidt, you have other questions?
I have. I'll act, yes.
Are you sure?
I will.
It doesn't happen very often.
Madam Chair, I got, Madam Chair, I got a comment. Nathan, not a week goes by where I hear back from somebody about how school district boundaries were fixed here in South Dakota. There is no rhyme or reason for it. I highly encourage you to have some good conversations to figure out the boundaries of this thing at a time.
Yep.
Come back with some kind of consensus. And last question, do you know how mu, do you have any idea of how much this would raise? How much revenue are you going to raise as a result of this? I know it's probably estimated at this point.
Yeah, we, I, I estimated it based on Lennox only. So we have about $160 million worth of assessed value in Lennox. I think that was $75 increase per 150, for $150,000 property. That's just within Lex. We know that that would be well, well below that once that expands outside of of that territory.
I don't have my calculator handy, but what does that work out to be for a total dollar amount that'll come into your coffers?
Some of that's a little difficult at this point because we don't know the total dollar amount of the taxable property within this district.
Right.
Or we're not.
Yeah.
Whoever is speaking, you really need to stand in front of the microphone.
What was your estimate for that?
For that, for the budget itself?
Yeah, your, your, your best estimate for the budget for the ambulance district?
Going forward as a district, if we would go to a 24/7 type staff service, we're looking at probably about $500,000 a year to, to fund that. Currently, right now, with the call volume we have and the payable calls that we're bringing in, we're bringing in somewhere, somewhere from $140,000 to $190,000 in, in revenue each year from calls. What we bill and what we get back in are way different situations and scenarios. Also, in EMS, you're, you're, you're paying for readiness. You're not always paying for somebody to be, it's being ready to take the call because we never know when that call comes in. So there is a little more wages paid in that aspect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for showing up today.
Thank you.
Good information.
Yep.
I'll go ahead and move on to item eight. Sherri, are you going to handle this?
Kind of, I'll start it.
Okay, great.
So I received a letter from FSA regarding the land in T that it's on CRP. And they said to buy it out or refund it, it would be $18,961.71, that's what we'd have to pay them.
Or Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
May I, Sherri?
Absolutely, because I have no idea.
So when we acquired this property, I did research verbally with the Farm Service Agency. And at that time, there was a contract that was expiring, and they indicated that, that at that time, that was the only contract. By their investigation, they then realized now recently that actually there was another, about four or five years contract left on. Sherri, give me the acres approximately. It's on the letter. I'm sorry, I don't remember it. Five acres? Of CRP that is still adjacent right to Nine, the Nine Mile area that we have an option to pay out, which I don't encourage. There's, there's no advantage for us to do so that I know of, or just let it contract out. We do not receive the payment as a government agent and entity. But as we do move forward, we do have to make sure that now that they have brought it to our attention that it does exist, so.
Thank you.
Did I do OK?
You did amazing.
Thank you.
So this is just for purposes of discussion today?
Unless you wanted to buy out the contract, which I don't under, I don't know why we would look at spending taxpayer money to do so at this time, so.
Do you also have the opening on May 4?
Yep.
So are we taking into consideration that CRP with the contract?
We'll have to disclose it, and I don't know if we'll have to re-advertise. Again, they, they had indicated there were no other CRPs until they, they had indicated there were no other CRPs until you got the letter about, what, three weeks, two weeks ago?
April 14.
April 14, not even that long ago, so.
All right. Anybody have anything else to say on that issue? All right, I'm not hearing anything, so go ahead and move on. Julia, good morning.
Good morning. Several items for you this morning. The first being to accept the resignation of Brenda Woolman, who's a full-time administrative assistant for the Sheriff's Office effective April 29.
Okay, I'd consider a motion, please.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next is to hire Anthony Von Hayden as a full-time correctional officer for the Sheriff's Office at 1989 per hour, effective the 3rd of May.
Thank you. I'd consider a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next is to hire Nicole Carson as a full-time paralegal for the State's Attorney's Office at 2036 per hour, effective the 4th of May.
Thank you. I'd consider a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Aaronz, a second by...
I'll second it if nobody else has.
I heard somebody down here.
Give it to Commissioner Gibbon.
Commissioner Gibbon, all right. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next is to hire Amanda Turner as a full-time property technician for the Department of Equalization at 1719 per hour, effective the 26th of April.
Thank you. I'd consider a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Question, Madam Chair.
I'll accept Commissioner Schmidt's second, and then you have a question?
What is a full-time property technician?
It's a clerical staff worker up for the equalization office. This individual will handle the building permits for that office.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Okay, and next, we have the appointment of three weed board members. Would you like me to handle those, or does someone else want to handle those?
Just take it.
Okay.
Is that right, Madam Chair?
Yeah, that's fine. Just go ahead.
Okay, the first being the appointment of Pam Gillespie to Lincoln County Weed Board, effective the 3rd of May.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next appointment to the weed board is Ralph Hammer, effective May 3.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gibbon, and a second by Commissioner Schmidt. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Go ahead.
And lastly, the appointment of Randy Smith to Lincoln County Weed Board, effective the 3rd of May.
I'd consider a motion.
Also moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Mr. Golden, are there any requests for executive session?
Yep.
Okay. With that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Hold on.
You guys know that we have a Board of Equalization at 12:30. I know, I'm sorry. I had to pick a time to post the agenda.
I'm not able to be here today.
I'm not able.
We the sacrificial lamb?
So, I, we can adjourn as county commissioners?
Yeah.
And we'll have a new agenda at 12:30?
This is a, yeah, yep. This is the one that we're at.
Okay. All right. So I've, I've got a motion and a second to adjourn.
Jake, can we zoom in?
Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We are adjourned.